Morning, everybody. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Thank you all for being here. If you'd please rise and join me for the National
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I almost said for the national anthem. Somebody's gonna have to sing, because I don't I know the words, but I don't sing. So we have to go a little bit out of order because of some noticing we've done for Agenda Item Number Four. So this will only take a minute, then we'll get right to the proclamation. So I'm gonna move to Agenda Item Number Three. Citizens' questions and comments on Agenda Items? Anybody online?
Nobody online.
Anybody in the room for Agenda Items? Seeing none, we'll move to Agenda Item Number Four. This is a Land Department item, and I'll invite up Tony Page. If you would do this concise, please.
Sure. Good morning, Commissioners. Tony Page, Land Department. What you have before you is an order of sale. This is for a list of properties that you can see on the attached Exhibit A that are owned by Douglas County either through tax foreclosure proceedings or past property auctions, past property acquisitions now deemed surplus to county needs or otherwise. It's a public oral auction that's scheduled for 10:00 a.m. on Tuesday, July 15, 2025, at the Douglas County Courthouse from 2:16. It's republished for four consecutive weeks in a newspaper of general circulation as well advertised throughout Douglas County. Is there any questions? Move to approve the order of sale.
A second.
What's the second? Questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Commissioner Boyce?
Aye.
Commissioner Crest?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion passes. Thank you, Tony. Again, that had been noticed for four weeks, and we wanted to make sure it was noticed to be done at nine o'clock. So we wanted to do that first, so that way we'll have plenty of time for Agenda Item Number One, which is our proclamation. And I think many of the people in the room are here for this proclamation. This is National Women's Veterans Day, and we are taking a little bit of time today to do a proclamation. But more importantly, we're here to say thank you for your service. Women veterans, of course, are as every bit as important as all of our veterans. I like that there's a special day to call out women veterans distinctly because of the unique challenges they face in the service and after the service. From different attitudes, the way people treat them, to some challenges around receiving health care and other concerns that women veterans have. It is important that we recognize them separately and in a special way. So today, I'd like to have Commissioner Boyce read the proclamation. Tamara's got some information she's gonna go through, and we'll hand out some proclamations. I'd like to do that today, if that's okay with the other Commissioners. We'll take some photos, and then I'll allow some of the folks that wanna speak to come up and speak. We're not in a hurry, so we got that other thing out of the way. Now we can take the time we need to do, to properly do this proclamation. So Commissioner Boyce?
Sure. Isn't it funny how even the Pledge of Allegiance is better when there's a group of veterans in the room? Here we go. Women Veterans Day, June 12, 2025. Whereas Douglas County proudly salutes all women who have courageously and honorably served in the United States Armed Forces, and whereas today we honor our brave women veterans and thank them as well as their families for their dedication, service, sacrifice, and outstanding contributions on behalf of a grateful nation. And whereas in 2019, Douglas County was honored to be the first county in Oregon to celebrate the newly established Oregon holiday recognizing women veterans. The first Oregon Women Veterans Day took place on June 12, 2019. And whereas we know that since the American Revolution, women have faithfully and fearlessly served and supported our nation's military forces, and upon the inception of the Army Nurse Corps in 1901, women have formally served in the United States Armed Forces. And whereas June 12, 2025, marks the 77th anniversary of the 1948 Women's Armed Services Integration Act, which acknowledged the great contributions made by women in the military and finally granted them the right to serve as permanent, full, and regular members of the United States Armed Forces and Reserves. And whereas during World War I, about 35,000 women officially served as nurses and support staff. In World War II, 140,000 women served in the U.S. Army and the Women's Army Corps performing critical jobs such as military intelligence, cryptography, and parachute rigging. At present, 17.7% of the nation's military forces are women. And whereas women now represent the fastest-growing segment of the veteran population, with nearly 2.2 million women veterans residing across the United States, including more than 30,000 in Oregon, and proudly over 1,600 women veterans that call Douglas County their home. And whereas we proudly support the Roseburg Chapter of the American Women Veterans Association, established in 1985 by a group of women veterans employed at the Roseburg VA Hospital. This local chapter welcomes all women veterans who have received an honorable discharge. And whereas we also want to thank and recognize the many local veteran organizations that support, assist, and advocate for women veterans and their families, including Douglas County Veteran Service Office, the Roseburg VA Healthcare System, Wings of Love, Veterans Forum, American Legion Auxiliary, Veterans of Foreign Wars and Auxiliary, Source One Serenity, Vet Cafe, Daughters of the American Revolution, and Vietnam Veterans of America. And now therefore, we, the Douglas County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim June 12, 2025, as Women Veterans Day in Douglas County, and call upon the community to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing, honoring, and paying tribute to our women veterans. This job.
Tamara.
As you heard Commissioner Boyce say in our proclamation, Women's Veterans Day is observed on June 12 in the United States, a date chosen to mark the anniversary of the American Armed, or Women's Armed Services Integration Act of 1948. The date was first recognized in New York State on June 12, 2008, as Women Veterans Recognition Day. The state of Oregon declared June 12 as Women's Veterans Day for the first time in 2019, and Douglas County Commissioners followed suit and were the first county in Oregon to declare Women Veterans Day in 2019. While Women Veterans Day is currently only a state-recognized commemoration, there is an effort to have the day recognized as a national holiday. The purpose of the national resolution is to address the disparities in care, recognition, and benefits that our women veterans receive, and to highlight the growing presence of women in the armed forces, and to pay respect to women veterans for their dutiful military service. Thank you for your service. And now I'd like to call up some groups, and we'll take some pictures. All right, joining Commissioner Freeman, let's bring up the American Women's Veterans Association.
How would you like us? You ever hear him? He don't need the middle.
Would you be in the middle?
Bring on me if you need to.
Do you two like to stand or stand?
Yep, I don't care. Whatever you say.
Stick my glasses.
Okay. Is everyone ready? Look right here. Take a few with my phone. Okay, ready? Cheers. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so now we would like to thank the organizations that support women veterans. So if you are a member of the Douglas County Veteran Service Office or the Douglas County Veterans Advisory Board, please come up.
Bring, bring him in. Bring him in short of this.
We're gonna swim it up.
One more.
Yeah. Okay. All right, look right here. Ready? Smile. Couple more. Take a couple with my phone real quick. Smile. Perfect. You don't hear this one click. Thank you.
All right, so then some of you might need to stay up here. We are gonna recognize Douglas County Veterans Forum, Veterans of Foreign Wars, VFW Post 2468, 9745, and the Auxiliary, American Legion Post 16, and 123, and their auxiliary. Brooke, you should be in this picture.
I'll have you three scoot over just a hair. You're fine where you were.
Just want them lined up?
Yeah, I'll have you, you guys come over just a little more. There we go.
Yep.
Okay. Ready to look right here? Smile. Perfect. Couple with my phone. Okay, ready? Go ahead and smile.
Perfect, thank you. All right, and now let's bring up a Roseburg VA Hospital and Cow Creek Tribal Veteran Service Office. And if there's anybody here from a Quack Community College Veterans Group?
Oh.
Ready, look right here. Okay. Smile. You know the drill, couple with my phone. Okay, ready? Go ahead and smile. Perfect, thank you.
All right, and we wanna have everybody, but I know that that means you have to get back up again. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, okay.
So everybody here that's here for the Women's Veterans?
All the veterans are here, either women veterans or those that are here supporting them.
Yes. Yes.
And we'll put some in the back, too.
Yeah, some of you, if you could go up top, that would be great. You're tall men. Yep.
How are you?
Yeah, too. Are you okay with that? So I'll have you come on this side so we can balance out just a little bit. Okay, so if you can't see me, I can't see you. You have one of those cat toys that are like
Can I see her?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's see, but I'm not seeing Mary very well. Mary, would you mind going by Commissioner Boyce? Okay. Look this way. Okay, look right here, please. Smile. Couple more. Couple with my phone. Okay, ready? Smile. Perfect, thank you, everybody. Thank you for your service. She likes to take mine.
All right. So I'm gonna allow the folks to come up and invite them to come up and speak. As long as you want, but don't feel like you're pressured to have to come up either if you prefer not to. So let's start with our VSO, Mary. Where'd Mary go? She go back to work?
She was very busy. She had a, she had a
Hi, I'm Cecilia McMullin, President of the Women Veterans Association here in Roseburg, or Douglas County, actually. And I thank you for recognizing women veterans. One of the, let's see, a lot of people say, why do we have a separate Women Veterans Day? It's not really a separate Veterans Day. It's mostly for recognition and appreciation. And why do we need that? Well, women have very specific and different challenges than men. And, you know, we, in the service, we got a lot of attention because we were different. And when we got out of the service, we became invisible. We were often asked, who are you? Are you the spouse? You know, and it wasn't, we didn't get a lot of recognition for that. So that's why we, we do these things like Women Veterans Day. As someone said, Women Veterans Day is not a separate day. It is a good groundbreaking day when women were acknowledged as essential to war efforts and could serve in regular armed forces. Some of the challenges, access to health care. Many report difficulties in finding gender-specific care through the VA services. And this is changing through the years and becoming better and better as we recognize women veterans. Recognition and representation. Women often feel invisible. Many asked if they are the veteran's spouse rather than the veteran. Mental health and transitional support. Shift to civilian life can be difficult, especially for women in high-stress roles. So ways of honoring their service. Advocating for better health care and transition services. Raising awareness of their military contributions. Encouraging employers to hire women vets. So I'm gonna skip over this because some of this is in the proclamation. But I wanna say some positive things about women veterans. The median veteran age for women is 49.2 years for females. In comparison, the median veteran age for men is 64 years of age. So we have a younger, because we have a very large group of women that have joined in recent years. More women veterans enrolled in higher education than non-veteran women. And that's 49% of women vets work in professional management positions. 75% of women vets that are hired by the Department of Defense or the VA work in executive branches. So there's a great deal of leadership in that role. I think that's all I have to say today. But thank you very much for recognizing women veterans.
Let me recap that. So women veterans are younger and smarter.
That's right.
Thank you. Good job. Douglas County Veterans Advisory Board Chair Tammy, would you like to say a few words? You don't have to, again. You're just on the list. Okay. Very good. I didn't see Quinn here. I have a spot for the forum. Actually, I have a spot for Wing of Loves, too. So Carol, would you like to say a few words?
I, I enjoy knowing the women veterans, and if I've got a job to do, I'd rather work with women than
I know we had somebody from the VA Hospital. Would you like to? Come up where people can hear you if you're gonna speak. Please. We certainly appreciate you coming over.
Yes, stepping in for Jessica today. She's not here. She's our Women's Veterans Program Manager. We just thank you always for your guys' support for our veterans. We love having the opportunity to serve all of our veterans, especially our women veterans. I'm sure Jessica would have all sorts of women veteran stuff to say, but that's all I got. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Van Orman.
First of all, I'll thank Commissioners for this day, and a very important day. And I'd like to congratulate the young ladies we have today for showing up. And it's really an honor for, and that goes for all our tribal members and veterans, too. So and if there's anything you ever need, let us, let us know. And I think the other thing I'd like to remind the veterans and people about our, this year is our 25th anniversary for our brunch, Fourth of July Day. And if you haven't got an invitation, you're welcome to show up, and they'll, they'll get you signed up and be able to go to the luncheon at that time. So even if you don't have an invitation through mail, but that's the way they, they do it now. You just go down, they'll sign you up, and we have brunch, so it's early enough to where you can attend Fourth of July events in the evening. So please, if you have time, come down and join us. We'll have some fun.
I've been to many of those events, and they're very well put on. Thank you and the tribe for doing that for our veterans.
Yeah, we're gonna, gonna honor a few of our, uh, people that have passed on. And so please come if you have time. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Anybody else? Anybody else that wants to speak? Please come up, sorry.
I just wanna say thank you for honoring vet, women vets as a woman veteran myself. But I also would like to extend an invitation for anybody here or anybody listening that we're going, there will be a brunch for women on the 28th of June at the library. If you could just RSVP so we know how much food to have. But it's in honor of women veterans and all their sacrifices to this nation. Thanks.
All right, thank you for all you do for the veterans here in the United Anybody else? I don't wanna leave anybody out. So in 2009, I was selected to be the Vice Chair of the Oregon House Veterans Committee. And in that role, I learned about this concern or issue around some of the distinct challenges that women veterans have. I attended quite a few meetings in, at the VA Hospital here, but also around the state, and sort of learned of some of the challenges. And I was surprised. I guess somebody used the term invisible. Maybe that isn't how I looked at it. I just didn't realize there was a, you know, a lack of services and a lack of acknowledgement, and there was these unmet needs. So I've been aware of it for quite some time. I'm glad that things are getting better slowly. I think there's a lot more work to do, but at very least, things like we're doing today and, you know, the VA Hospital's working towards having, you know, more and more of those services available for veterans. So thank you, women that are here today. Thank you, those folks that are here supporting those women. We sure appreciate you. We're gonna have a couple-minute break. I'll first ask some other Commissioners. Does anything you have?
Just thanks for being here. It's always the best meeting when the veterans are in the room.
Sure. You know, and Douglas County's known for a lot of firsts, but I'm really proud that we're the first to honor the women veterans in the state. And I'm certain as long as we're around, we're gonna continue to do that. Thank you all.
All right, so we'll take a little bit of a break. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. We have a few agenda items. You're welcome to stay, but if you're a bit busy with your day, you can, you can go also. Just take a couple-minute break.
Good.
Thank you.
Mr. Bracy. I do business in your, in your big, big
Oh, yeah, yeah, I was there this morning.
I know Ben?
Yeah, my son.
I didn't know that.
I know Dallas, I know town.
The thing of John for you. Let me know if that doesn't work. I can use some of this, obviously, I have lots of pictures.
Yeah, I'll give it down, I'll get it down to our
That's what I want. Oh, yeah.
Let me know if you need anything else.
Oh, so cute.
Yeah, say hi.
Are you at work today?
Okay, Dave. Mosey on.
I'm busy.
They don't rip, well, hopefully they not rip me off.
No, no, no.
So are they fine? Chad, Chad is really
All right, we're gonna go ahead and continue with our meeting. We are to the Consent Agenda. Looks like we just have one contract extension here. I will go ahead. I will go ahead and move to approve the Consent Agenda.
A second.
I have a motion, a second. Questions or comments on Agenda Item Number Two, the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Commissioner Boyce?
Aye.
Commissioner Crest?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes. I'm gonna call number three again for questions and comments. I will note that Agenda Item Number Six is a public hearing. So if you're here for number six, please wait till we get to that Agenda Item. Anybody online?
Nobody online.
Anybody in the room who'd like to speak on Agenda Items? We've already taken care of number four and so five, seven, or eight. Sorry, five's also here. I'm sorry. Seven or eight. Seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Five, Planning Department. I'll invite up Joshua Shackley. This is gonna be a public hearing for an annexation, and I'll ask for a staff report.
Good morning, Commissioners. Joshua Shackley, Douglas County Planning. Before you this morning is a hearing and order incorporating territory for an owner-initiated annexation of property into the Calipulia Rural Fire District for property located at 2586 Sterns Lane in Oakland. Chief petitioners are Austin and Lexie Kennedy. Subject property consists of a dwelling on 1.34 acres and is owned farm, exclusive farm use grazing. Staff has reviewed the annexation petition and found it to be in compliance with county comprehensive plan and statewide planning goals, and there are no known objectors at this time.
Any questions of staff before we go into the public hearing? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, invite anybody who'd like to come forward and speak on Agenda Item Number Five. Is there anybody online?
Nobody online.
Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing and pleasure the board.
Move to approve the annexation.
I'll second that.
I have a motion, a second. Any questions? I have a motion of second, uh, any questions or comments? Saying none, I'll call the question, Commissioner Boyce.
Aye.
Commissioner Criss.
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion passes. Agenda Item number six is a public works item, it's also a public hearing, and I believe Josh Ecock might be doing this one today.
Good morning. Uh, this is Josh Ecock, Public Works. Today, I don't, don't think it's actually a public hearing, but it's just the order setting hearing today. So it will just, uh, let's see here. So, uh, the Board of Commissioners signed a resolution on June fourth, which initiated the proceedings for vacation of a portion of Colonial Road, County Road number fifty-two. Uh, thus, ORS three sixty-eight, three forty-six requires the county governing body to establish a time and place for a public hearing to consider whether the proposed vacation will be in the public interest.
To approve the order.
And I'll second that.
Okay, so this is, um, just the order setting the date for the public hearing. These vacations have lots of steps in them, so. I didn't understand, I'm sorry if I had that wrong. Other, any questions or comments, or motion?
Motion, Dan second.
Yeah, motion of second, um, I'll go ahead and call the question, Commissioner Boyce.
Aye.
Commissioner Criss.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, uh, and the motion passes, thank you. Agenda Item number seven is a Senior Service Department item, and I'll invite up Jeannie Wright, Senior Director.
Good morning, Jeannie Wright, uh, Douglas County Senior Services. Today before you is a modification in a contract between Douglas County Senior Services, or Douglas County, and S and B Foods, um, for an additional seventeen thousand meals, nine dollars per meal, uh, for an additional cost of a hundred and fifty-three thousand. The reason for this is we are seeing an uptick in individual seniors coming into dining sites, as well as an increased utilization of our Meals on Wheels program. We're asking for, um, approval of this.
To approve the contract modification.
I'll second.
So a motion of second, um, so th- this is certainly not for just the rest of this fiscal year, so it must be moving into next fiscal year also.
Um, these are for an estimated for this year. Um, this is to, to pay for these for this year.
So for the next couple of weeks?
Yeah, well, it's for, um, in the month of, um, uh, May and June. This will be re- re- got our maximum contract, so this is to catch up on that.
Okay, so this is for the current.
Culmination, yes.
Fiscal year, okay. So, um, the reason I ask that is there's this sort of false narrative floating around Douglas County that somehow the Meals on Wheels program has been cut. So this is an increase in the current year.
Yes.
I know our Budget Committee recently attentively approved a budget, uh, that we'll be seeing here in the next week or so, um, that it also increases Meals on Wheels program, so no measurement of anything I've seen has, there been any indication that Meals on Wheels is being cut.
Absolutely, none.
Thank you. Any, any further questions or comments? Now I'll call the question, Commissioner Boyce.
Aye.
Commissioner Criss.
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion passes, thank you for the work you're doing. Agenda Item number eight is a Sheriff Department item, and I see the sheriff has arrived, uh, hiding in the back as usual.
Made it back from the range safely. Good morning Commissioners, John Hanlon Sheriff. The item before you is a communication service agreement, actually a number of agreements, for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, the communications, uh, nine-one-one center facilities and radio usage fee agreements with the, uh, following agencies, Adapt, Azalea Rural Fire Protection District, Looking Glass Rural Fire Protection District, Earl Creek Fire Department, and Upqua Valley Ambulance. And these all, all represent, uh, or reflect a four percent increase over last year's contracts.
With to approve the communication service agreements.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, questions or comments? Saying none, I'll call the question, Commissioner Boyce.
Aye.
Commissioner Criss.
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion passes.
Thank you.
Chair, thank you.
Sorry?
Thank you.
Oh.
Uh, Agenda Item number nine is Commissioner comments, Commissioner Boyce.
That's for me.
Commissioner Criss.
Um, just wanna remind to everybody that, you know, we, since we're over in the valley and that people listening over in the valley and, um, might understand that their, uh, the Reed Sports Chamber of Commerce chainsaw competition starts tomorrow, runs through the weekend. Um, it's, if you've never been, it's a pretty interesting event, and, uh, so anyway, just wanted to kind of give them a little shout-out, get some people over there.
So, thank you for mentioning that, not only is it amazing the ability of the carvers, uh, the carvers are from literally all over the world, it's multinational, it's a pretty big competition. Take your wallet, e- every, every evening, uh, there's a, uh, auction, and inevitably, I seem like I always bring a piece of chainsaw art home. I, I will give you a little bit of a heads-up. It looks much bigger in your yard or in your house than it does out in the field, so when you get it home, it's large. Uh, but, but they're certainly worth, um, going over there and supporting a bit.
Yeah, one more, I should add something. I was, uh, I was fishing for shad down at Yellow Creek the other day, and all of a sudden I look up and there's some folks coming down the rapid in these store-bought blow-up tubes. There was a lady hanging on to the side of her tube waving her arm in distress. And she had a toddler and an infant that managed to stay in the tube. And she was not wearing the life jacket. Thankfully, the kids were. There was another kid that was ten or eleven years old coming down in the tube, couldn't get over to the bank, we ended up rescuing him in the boat, he had a life jacket on. And there was an adult man who came down the river in the tube, no life jacket. And I talked to them about the importance of wearing life jackets, I told them that this time of year, inevitably, someone drowns every year because it's hot outside and the water's still cold. And I think I heard the sheriff say when he was in the office the other day, uh, that they had their first drowning of the year, so, again, just a reminder, it's hot outside, water's still cold, wear your life jacket.
That river has lots of force around it. Uh, the other thing we should mention, uh, with the dry hot weather and the wind we have been having, things are dry out there and fire seasons, uh, already started, and, uh, we've started to see some, uh, activity around wildfires, so, uh, folks, please pay attention. Lot of fires are human-caused, and those should all be avoidable, so, um, it's, it's that time of year again. Anything else for my fellow Commissioners? Saying none, I'll adjourn the meeting and thank you all for being here.